So we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll have Vice Mayor Lamb read some required wording here.
Members of the City Council may participate in the meeting via Zoom, consistent with the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order in 2920, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act. The Cloverdale City Council welcomes you to its meetings that are typically scheduled for the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. Your interest and participation are encouraged and appreciated. Please silence all pagers, cellular telephones, and other communications devices upon entering the meeting. Public comments may be made through the use of Zoom or sent by email. Email comments will become part of the record and viewable online in the city clerk's office. Please refer to the end of the agenda for further instruction. When asked to do so by the mayor, those wishing to address the City Council are asked to step up to the podium, speak directly into the microphone so everyone in the audience can hear your comments and so they will be recorded into the official record. State your name and city of residence for the record. Zoom attendees will be muted until they are called upon for public comments. To make a public comment, use the raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer or dial *9 if you are using your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or city clerk to address you by name or phone number and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. And now we'll stand for the President of the Regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Paula.
Here.
Councilmember Walter, he's absent. Vice Mayor Lamb.
Present.
And Mayor Cruz.
Here. Any conflict of interest, declaration? Council, or any members of the public? Agenda.
Is this Marka, is this when we go up there and change three minutes?
In a few minutes. Yes. Thank you. And agenda review, regular session changes and/or deletions.
Madam Mayor, staff does not have any proposed changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you. And now, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during the item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. I welcome the public to the podium, please.
Hi, David White. Live on the Gray Road. Been a resident of Cloverdale about 25 years. A number of houses. Anyways, my wife and I live right on the north end of the River Park. And we walk our dog almost every day down the River Park. And I know the town really needs a dog park besides the skate park, but I'm talking about a dog park right now. We found a great location in the River Park that is right next to the water treatment plant. It's all the way, it's parked on the street by the cemetery and almost anybody from downtown could actually walk to this dog park. It would be a low impact for any neighbors. They want to hear dog barking and all that stuff. And my wife and I are very interested in if we can get any kind of City Council effort or even the planning commission. I don't know who's involved in this decision making, but I'd be willing, I'm a retired contractor and I've built a lot of stuff here in Cloverdale, as a lot of people know. I would be happy to donate my time to supervise the project, get the subcontractors for fencing, irrigation, landscaping. And I know we have, we put it on Facebook for last week on the Cloverdale page and also the community page. And we've had probably close to 200 people responding and enjoying the idea of actually having a dog park in Cloverdale. People are driving all the way to Hillsburg, out to the dam to go to the dog park. And I mean, we're one of the only towns in the whole Sonoma County that doesn't have a dog park. So I printed some pictures of the area, the dog park. And I could give them. The space is approximately beside a football field, about 100 by 300 feet. The water treatment plant is right there, so we know there's water there and there's power there. So it wouldn't take much power to run a dog park, but you know, long term, you have to have maintenance and stuff like that. So. That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks for your answer.
Any other comments?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kevin, David, Marka, the new members. For those who don't know me, I'm Elsa Halbach. And I'm a fellow of the interest of the dog park. About a year and a half ago, 2019 sometime, I stood here and I requested a dog park, as many have. It's been almost 20 years since people have been started the dog park quest. And we're continuing it. We did, I guess, have a short stop because of COVID, but the last time, I know, some of you know, we've been into the Public Works Committee Subcommittee Member meetings. And we went round and round and we went looking for places and different ideas and stuff like that. And then COVID getting everything out the window. But before that, we were told to go ahead and go to the Planning Division to see Rafael Miranda. And right after that, everything went down. But I met Rafael last week. Just introduced myself in the lobby. And I have put us on his agenda for his meeting on August 17. And Marka, I sent you the email. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this time we will be more successful. I know that there is problem with location. There's no land. Maybe there's a past land, once there was a profit monetary one. So my original idea, I don't know if you remember or not, but I came here following up master plan for the Second Street City Park, a big plan that was put together by the city and big interest of a dog park was there. So I came and I said, okay, so where is our section? I even attended to the meeting. I said, where's our section for a dog park for it to be there? And they said, no. And I couldn't figure out why not. So then we went on to meetings and meetings and more meetings. And we're back to square one. There's no location, there's no space. So I'm revisiting the idea of my goal would be, or our goal would be, to have a section of every city park allocated for a dog park. If you guys have seen what I am seeing in every one of our parks, there is room. And even in the city park, the far corner that backs up to Vineyards and the Diamond, that could be a nice little livestock area for medium-sized dogs. Herbert Park has an area to the side of the kids' area where it's wooded, would be for large, there's room. So we have to use what we have left now because there's nothing out there.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to let you know that we're back. And hopefully, I'm going to just read one little quote from Ruth B. Ginsburg. It says, "Fight for the thing you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." I just hope that you guys will join us this time in finding a solution for a dog park in Cloverdale.
Thank you, Elsa.
You're very welcome. Again, welcome back.
Any other comments at this moment?
So Madam Mayor, if I may, I just had a, you know, this dog park and skate park have been a dire need of this community for a long time. It's been brought up and there's always been obstacles. So I just wanted to get clarification. Is this going to be on the Planning Subcommittee agenda?
It is a standing item.
The study, okay.
On Public Works, right? Or they will change it?
Madam Mayor, it used to be a standing item on the Public Works Subcommittee.
And now it's a.
It was subsequently moved to the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee Agenda because of the aspects of planning for dog park and land use and planning related. I think where Councilmember Paula is going with this is there was a request at the Public Works Subcommittee meeting yesterday for an update on kind of a status overview of the issue of dog parks.
And we will address it.
Thank you. And I would also like to ask if they could look again at the city-owned three and a half acres on Asti. That was looked at before, both for a skate park and a dog park. It's a good location.
So Councilmember Paula, we will address this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
But you know that.
Well, no, I was just making a request.
Yes, but we don't discuss these issues of public. You know that.
Well, okay. We certainly can give direction, but that's all I was asking.
Thank you. So now we're going to go ahead and have the proclamation on Night Out. So would you like to read that, Councilmember Bagby? We have it right here. Certainly.
Proclamation recognizing August 3, 2021, as National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring its 38th Annual Nationwide Crime, Drug, and Violence Prevention Program on August 3, 2021, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 38th Annual Night Out provides a unique opportunity for citizens of Cloverdale to join forces with thousands of communities across the state of California in promoting cooperative police, community, crime, and drug prevention efforts. And whereas the National Night Out event is a year-long community-building campaign designed to heighten crime prevention awareness, generate support and participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships, and send a message to criminals to let them know that neighborhoods are organized and are fighting back. And whereas local citizens play a vital role in assisting police agencies through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the Cloverdale Police Department has continued their commitment to excellence in service and to working together with the community to keep them safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Cloverdale, March Cruz, hereby recognizes on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, August 3, 2021, as National Night Out in Cloverdale, and encourages all members of the community to continue to help make our community a safer and more enjoyable place to live, work, and play.
So Chief, would you please invite the public to this event and tell a little bit more about it?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Mayor. Thank you. This next Tuesday, the 3rd, we will be hosting this. We're very excited to bring it back. As you know, COVID kind of slowed the process and then we were unable to offer this. We did do it in 2019. We have really, I would say, picked up the process here. We're doing a lot more this year because it's our first time back in a while. And we're going to have something that we've never had before. We're really kind of focusing on emergency preparedness this year for this National Night Out. We think it's really important, given the times that we live in. And so we have some presentations and some booths that are going to be there that offer brochures and information about emergency preparedness, which are going to be very beneficial to our community. But also for the children, we have a variety of different characters that are coming. We have Avengers, we have Spider-Man, we have some Star Wars troopers, stormtroopers coming. So we also have raffle prizes, both for kids and adults. I think we have some bicycles that we're going to raffle off. But it's a great way to really build the partnership between our police and our community and really build that trust. And right now, law enforcement really needs that. We need your support out there. We'd love to have you there. We're going to have hot dogs, chips, so as I think too, water. So definitely, if you have your kids, bring them on down. It's going to be a fun night. We look forward to it.
Is it at the Plaza?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, it is at the Plaza.
And it starts at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, 6 to 9 o'clock.
And it is kind of a preamble to the big event that we're going to be hosting, this Citrus Fair on August 7, that is again around resilience and emergency preparedness. And with that, we would like to welcome the Wildfire Services and Sonoma Technology and the Cloverdale Fire Protection District Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That's a mouthful. And please, City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, welcome back to our person-to-person meeting since we began to hold all virtual meetings. I'm really delighted tonight to have with us Jeff Peters, as well as Joel Holland and his team from Wildfire Services, as we can see in the audience, to give us an overview and presentation of a very important effort. It's referred to as the Community Wildfire Protection Planning Effort. Just by way of background, the Board of Supervisors in late May approved approximately $3.7 million for vegetation management in Sonoma County to reduce the risk of wildfires. And our Northern Sonoma County JPA was awarded about $504,000 to establish a community wildfire protection planning program. And you'll hear the acronym is CWPP rather than the long verbiage for that. The purpose of that effort is to develop a plan to help reduce the threat of wildfire to our community. As we know, the significant impact of wildfires really outside the boundaries of the city. So this is kind of a regional planning effort that includes the unincorporated area around the city, but also city interests and as well as our various partners. So tonight, what you're going to hear is a presentation overview of the CWPP planning effort. It has just begun, it's just initiated. And so we're really in the early stages of this planning process. And we thought it would be valuable to provide the opportunity for council to get an overview of the planning process and an update on what this planning process is expected to generate at the end of the process. So I'd like to turn it over at this point and introduce Jeff Peters. Jeff leads up our Northern Sonoma County CERT. He's been a vital interest in our resilient Cloverdale effort. And he's been doing a whole lot of work with our Citrus Fair and with our Cloverdale Fire Protection District on emergency preparedness. So I'd like to welcome Jeff to the dais. Jeff?
Thank you. I'm going to immediately excuse myself and sit down because this is a community effort. And the two community leaders, Susie Cummings is on Zoom, if we can unmute her, and she'll start. And Madeline Wallace will continue as the other co-chair. And then the folks in Wildfire Services will speak. And I'm here to answer questions, but I'm not the star of the show.
Madeline, if you want to come on up and say a few words?
Which is you on?
She is.
I'm on now. So I'm. Before Madeline.
I sent you a picture.
Yes, I can see.
Hi, Susie. I see you're unmuted, but I'm not able to hear you.
Oh. Let me start video. Yeah. I'm unmuted here. But can you hear me now? No. Well, it looks like I'm not. It looks like I'm not able to talk to you. It's not registering.
Yes, I can hear you now. Are you able to hear me, Susie?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, I have a statement to read, so I don't ramble. Good evening, Mayor Cruz and members of the Cloverdale City Council. My name is Susie Cummings. I am a resident of the Del Webb Community of Clover Springs, which lies within the Cloverdale city limits. I am one of the two co-chairs of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, otherwise known as CWPP Committee, which was formed to address wildfire hazards within the area served by the Cloverdale Fire Protection District. I have been active in individual and community wildfire preparedness activities for over 20 years. I am a COPE leader and a CERT volunteer. I believe in the mission of the CWPP and am pleased that we will be using public input, data from fire science, and input from our fire professionals to write the best community wildfire protection plan designed specifically for our community. And now I would like to introduce my co-chair, Madeline Wallace.
Good evening, members of the Cloverdale City Council. My name is Madeline Wallace. I'm a resident of the unincorporated area of Cloverdale. The unincorporated area of the. Such as the Council on Aging and Dying Sciences, the Healthcare Foundation, the Hillsburg Museum, Hillsburg Animal Shelter, and various other animal shelters in the AA and WJ. I've taken after an individual community wildfire prevention activities and preparedness for over 20 years and a member of CERT and COPE and a neighbor of Jeff Peters. He gets everybody involved. So my introduction to Cloverdale, three weeks after moving here in 2001, was a fire coming on our hill caused by a drop peak in the line and high winds. I have included brush fire descent. Our acreage sheltering our neighbors and current parts of the river road. I strongly believe a creation of Cloverdale CWPP will help protect us all. We've been evacuated for the past three years and I think it could move for us all to work together. I have one little side note. We have fire retardant in the UDAI and we did add a fire mesh to our roof things originally due to scorpions coming in, but it also helps to keep ourselves. Next. Now, I would also like to introduce you to Joel Holland, a lot of fire services. Our consulting team is here to present to you more details on what a CWPP is and why it is critical for Cloverdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Good evening. Nice to be here to speak with you. I represent the consulting team of Wildfire Services and Sonoma Technology. We're honored to be a part of this process. I'm very excited about the way the process started and it got off to a solid start. Has a very, very good vision for preparation and mitigation. So if we can skip some slides in the meantime, I'm going to move through these quickly. If you'd like me to pause and do that. One of the questions. Two things I want to ask you. Number one, what is a CWPP? And then the outcomes and the outcome. And then the second thing is the fire science behind it. So the team, really, I'll start from the bottom because the bottom is the most important, stakeholders. And close to the Cloverdale Fire Protection District, we have a CWP. And then Sonoma Technology, our service team, definitely does the eyes and graphing for this CWPP process. So if we go to the next slide. There are five reasons why we want to develop a CWPP. First, we want to document current conditions and a local collaboration. Stakeholders are going to help set that priority. And getting the community to engage each process is critical. CWPP, we've defined mine at one of the authorities of the issue about 100 hours in 2003. And I think we go into a successful CWP. Have the community to be able to gain access to state and federal funding for ongoing action. The critical part of the three legs of stool of the CWPP is really stakeholder collaboration. And so that's the phase that we're in now in terms of building buy-in and building collaboration with various community members. Certainly, the Cloverdale Fire Protection District is a critical partner in this. The CERT team, Community Emergency Response Team, help to form the request proposal. And then, of course, COPE, citizens organized to prepare for emergencies, is critical. And then this step here, engaging with the city and county officials as well, is critical. And then land management agencies and homeowners and property owners are critical to the process as well. So really trying to broaden our reach as best as possible we can. The next slide, in terms of objectives and potential outcome, what we really want to try to do is develop a strategy around wildfire preparedness. And in particular, we want to focus on the wildland interface as well as the intermix, which are two critical areas relative to wildfire preparedness. And as we all know, the Cloverdale Fire Protection District is surrounded by both the WOE and the intermix. We want to help ensure the protection of economic, ecological, and natural resources within the community itself. And think about the Cloverdale Fire Protection District as a jurisdiction being fully considered as a place that we'd like to protect. We want to foster that collaboration and develop a more resilient community when it comes to wildfire. That's a critical outcome. We want to develop a CWPP that helps with mitigation action planning. So again, the CWPP is sort of a planning phase to go into action. So the ways that we foster community engagement are very carefully designed, really by our committee and Jeff, in terms of forming a stakeholder group and really looking into the diverse group of community members that need to be participating with this process. So landowners, local decision-makers, public representatives, all critical to this process. And then in terms of CWPP itself, we want to plan and conduct a number of workshops, both educational as well as engagement-oriented. That is, that'll be a big piece of what the CWPP will hopefully intend. The meeting case or the plan around meetings is really driven off deliverables from the consulting team. And essentially, we kick off with a great meeting on the 7th of July. The Safety Expo coming on August 7 is going to be a critical step. And that is where we have open meeting for the community to gather input and feedback and really to set the CWPP off on the right foot. We hope for lots of attendees. Of course, we'll be prepared for fewer and ready to reach out if necessary. But of course, we're planning for up to 1,000 people to be at that meeting. The next three stages would be just meetings as a result to review the deliverables as a part of the CWPP. So we'll review the community-based map. We'll look at the hazard risk assessment review. And then before the conclusion of the project, we'll again invite the public's input to the process. So each one of those review stages, we hope to have a maximum number of engaged citizens to give us feedback along that. Good, thanks. So developing a district-based map is really a critical first step. And we've begun that process. We basically categorize the area into three critical components. You have the intermix, you have the interface, and then you have the area that's really, really critical in terms of the state responsibility area, which is the influence. So that pink area in the map that you can see obviously is in the state responsibility area, but that's critical to mapping out and planning mitigation strategies going forward. In developing that community map, we think a lot about vegetation and fuels. So in wildland, our license fuels. We think about vegetation in terms of fire behavior and fire risk. There are a number of factors that go into these considerations. And just on the right there on this slide, you can see that we look at elevation, slope, fuel model, canopy cover, things like the crown in terms of height, flame height, and anticipating what a fire might do in this wildland urban interface. So the good news is, is there's a great deal of data available from Sonoma County already. That is, the challenge is that we have to update that data relative to the Cloverdale Fire Protection District. So on your left, on the left side of the screen, you have the current data that exists as a result of an extensive YR-based vegetation study for the county of Sonoma. And on your right, you have recent history in terms of fire. And so basically, that vegetation, vegetational data needs to be updated. And so that is a project, a piece of the project. And so that is a project, a piece of the project that we are engaged with now. One of the most unique aspects of this project relative to the CWPPs is that we are going to do a parcel level assessment. And what that means is really important from a detail point of view, from a citizen point of view, in terms of their ability, our ability, to prepare for wildfire. So there are five steps in doing this, and they are quite integrative. And our partners at STI are expert in this and have done it before. If you'd like to see it done or what product was, if you want to look at the county Marin CWPP plan. It's really the best in class in terms of planning and actionable intelligence. So I won't go into all the steps, but I think just on the right-hand side, you can see imagery in the mapping functions of the CWPP. The intention here is to examine flame length and the rate of speed that the fire might spread based on vegetational analysis as well as parcel level assessments. And again, we're looking at boundaries in terms of parcels. Looking at a 200-foot buffer zone between dense areas of structures and population and really helping to plan out the future steps relative to wildfire. We really try to deliver an easily digestible, quickly understandable model. And this parcel level hazard assessment map really illustrates this in that we do color coding by parcel, by the area relative to vegetation, relative to density and slope. All the details that go into it will help us generate a map for the community that will help not only our suppression partners, the agency, the fire agency, but also going forward, the mitigation partners in terms of planning and maintenance. So lower risk areas are highlighted in this map in purple. And then, of course, at the highest level, you've got the red areas where that would be, those would be areas where we want to focus the most effort in terms of mitigation maintenance. Drilling down even further to get to the parcel level, the GIS data that's available from the county is extremely helpful. But of course, our partners at STI are going to help get to the parcel level from point of view of the parcel boundary all the way down to the five-foot measurement from the structure itself. So within the story map itself, as a deliverable as part of the CWPP, the community will have this as a tool going forward for years to come. And obviously, a CWPP is only as good as the year it was done. So keeping it fresh and up to date is really critical. So we ground proof on all of this GIS and satellite data that we gather, not only with drones, but also with boots in the ground. And that's where Wildfire Services comes in to partner with STI to actually walk the perimeter and look at these areas specifically. So as the plan of mitigation strategies, so as the plan maintenance strategies, and to think more detail in a way of how we address the challenges at hand. So the CWPP has two overarching sort of pieces to it. One of them is this district-level focus and alignment with the Cloverdale Fire Protection District's priorities, really critical and collaborating with our agency partners. And then second, community-focused priorities, strategies for creating more resilient neighborhoods. This isn't just a district effort. This is neighborhood by neighborhood effort. And two partners, obviously, the Fire Protection District, but also Firewise USA and the connection from the CWPP to accreditation as a Firewise community is really a critical step that Jeff and the committee have come up with. So we're excited to be a part of that as well. So the story map, I've already alluded to that a little bit, but it's really one of the most valuable and interactive aspects of the CWPP as produced by Wildfire Services and Sonoma Technology, is really a critical component to helping citizens to understand their responsibilities and their ability to make a difference in terms of preparation. So we will draft the CWPP and get buy-in from the stakeholders. And each one of our meetings and each one of our steps in the process are open to public. We obviously, when we take that comment, we will go back and re-draft and make edits accordingly. And then the final step in terms of deliverables would be that story map that is live online for community members to access themselves. So this is just a little sample on the right-hand side of what a story map might look like. But again, I encourage you to go to firesaferrin.org/cwpp to see a completed process. So the project schedule is both ambitious and appropriate, I think, in this case. We are, of course, in the process of just getting started through July to September, where we'll be soliciting stakeholder input. Again, this is a really critical time for us to get as much buy-in and as much input as we can get. We will start to perform the hazard assessment as soon as we possibly can. We've begun that both on the ground level as well as in the air. And then in October through December, we're performing parcel level hazard assessments and preparing a draft CWPP document for input and guidance. January and February are crunch times for us as consultants because we'll be taking those edits into consideration writing out the CWPP itself. And we intend to deliver the final product of the CWPP sometime between January and February of 2021, 2022, excuse me, and then the story map soon in the fall. So I obviously could talk about this for hours. I don't want to take too much of your time, but if there are questions or anything that I can answer for you, I'm happy to do so.
I think, um, a flex to the...
I have another question if I may.
Yes, it's the input from the community that we see. We have sent out emails to... Many, many people in Cloverdale requesting input as to who should be on the committee, asking whether there are any people who they would suggest who might be willing to serve or if there is anyone we have forgotten who would be representing a segment of our community. Our meetings are open to the public. They are, and we have room for more. We have about 30 people on the committee, I think, at this time. But we're always open to new perspectives and new points of view. The consultants were chosen after contacting the people who have written other or have not written, but requested that other CWPPs be written and find out who their consultants were. And then they were contacted to see if they would be interested in submitting a proposal to us. There were four consultants primarily who were reached out to. And two did submit proposals. The one that we felt was most, that would provide materials that were most user-friendly, I would say, that the public could benefit from reading and looking at maps and that there was information available online to people in our community. That, those were the consultants we chose. And if you go look at the Marin CWPP, then you'll see why we chose them because the story map there is a great summary.
I need to interrupt you, please.
Oops, I hear someone speaking. Is there a question?
Yes, there is a question. I have a question regarding the map of boundaries and how that is going to integrate with what the chief is developing for Cloverdale Incorporated areas. That's my concern. Chief, would you...
So I'm not 100% sure we are asking, or is it relevant?
They showed a picture of the boundaries and areas of influence, et cetera. And I would like to know how this fits within our, our plan of what is the incorporated part of Cloverdale and our evacuation map. How do we integrate that information with this information in terms to avoid any kind of public confusion?
Madam Mayor, if I can, I think I understand your question. And I think it's a very good question. Joel Holland and I have connected via email. And one of the early steps is to look at existing data and information that the city has developed. One, a part of our, most recently, our local hazard mitigation plan, but most certainly in terms of our evacuation plans, evacuation routes. We want to obviously seek all the opportunity we can to integrate and be consistent with all of the existing planning documents that have been prepared with this planning effort. They're related, but there is some notable differences because the, a key aspect of the CWPP is vegetation management, whereas the evacuation orders or the evacuation plans are really related to if a wildfire occurs, how are we going to safely evacuate our community and what routes our residents should follow in doing so. But we'll want to acknowledge that the differences between the city, which is evacuation would be overseen by our Cloverdale Police Department, whereas the unincorporated area is going to be overseen by our Sheriff's Department. So a lot of that coordination that is going to, would be necessary for evacuations will happen between the police department and the sheriff's office as part of the emergency response. But we'll try to reflect that as much as we can in the planning process and in the planning document. But the bigger focus of this effort is going to be really focused on doing that analysis and assessment of where the wildfire hazards exist and how we are going to address them. Whereas the evacuation is kind of a response to a wildfire, should it impact or other hazards that may impact our, our community that necessitates that we take action to, you make sure we avoid the impact of the hazard on our residents.
Yes, and I just want to make sure that this is clear because on August 7th, some people will be asking the question. You know, where am I on the map? And what happens if XYZ is an emergency that I'm going to follow? Or what am I going to do if there's a... So at this point, I thank you for your presentation.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. I just want to first thank you for the presentation. I'm just so happy to see this underway. I think it's so needed for our city and for our county. And I'm really anxious to see the end result. It's really going to be a lot of work. I'm hopeful that our city, somebody from our city staff will be participating as a stakeholder in this process. And I was going to ask our city manager, will somebody be working with them throughout this process?
Absolutely, Councilmember Paul. Thus far, I've participated in two of the meetings. I know that in all instances, I may not be able to participate. And if not, we'll certainly assign staff as appropriate to the topic. And that would likely be either our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, or Police Chief, you know, as needed, or depending on the subject matter that's being, being addressed, you know, during those meetings. So we will absolutely be participants in this planning process and have a direct role. And I also want to acknowledge that both Councilmember Bagby as well as Mayor Cruz have participated in some of the initial planning meetings of the CWPP.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes.
A quick comment on your question. Amongst the stakeholders are Chief Ferguson and the Sheriff's Department. And one of the hazards that we want to protect against is the blockage of the evacuation maps. So one of the parcel level mapping products is to actually look at major routes of evacuation, whether within the city or outside of the city, but within the fire district in order to protect those and see what mitigation has to happen. So it's right on point with your question. And then at the August 7th event, hopefully, if we can get all the technology to work, you will see Chief Ferguson's map of Cloverdale and the evacuation. And you'll see all the surrounding areas and the evacuation for those areas as well. And we're going to ask people to go up and put a pin where they live so they can remember where their evacuation zone is. So we're hoping that that will all work out. In 2017, when we were on top of the hill fighting the pocket fire and saving 200 homes over in the eastern part of the Cloverdale area, we were, the good news is we were successful. The bad news is we were completely unprepared. There had been no vegetation management work done in the area at all. In the five years that have happened since then, I've applied for four grants, gotten one of the four. And the turn downs have all said, you don't have a CWPP. What's the science behind what you're saying you need to do? This is the solution to that. If you look at the data, Sonoma County is going to come to $38 million in additional federal work funding. There's another $20 million that's going to come in from FEMA. And there's an untold amount coming in from the state. There's going to be an awful lot of money spent on vegetation management. I would like to see Cloverdale get their share.
Definitely. And we definitely appreciate all the effort that you put throughout all this year that we've been meeting on the ceiling in Cloverdale. So, you know, Jeff has been a standing person at all times. So thank you very much for this initiative because we definitely care about the people in River Road, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So do we have, we need to open this to public comment? Does anybody else in council have any comments? So Irene, are there any hands?
No hands, I would assume it's heavy.
Okay. All right, so at this point, once again, thank you for your attendance and your presentation. Very thorough. And I'm sure that you will hear from us if we have further questions.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And now we'll move to consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed or considered separately.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move approval with Katsan Kelly.
A second. And there's nobody in the public, right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So approval of previous city council meeting minutes. That was under consent.
That's under consent.
Sorry, three and four. Okay, communications, anything?
No communications were received, Mayor.
Okay, and we don't have a public hearing. New business. Designation of the city a Cloverdale Voting Delegate and Alternate Voting Delegate for the 2021 League of Cities, League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to designate yourself as our voting delegate and Councilmember Bagby as our alternate.
I'll second that.
Irene.
All right, there was a second, thank you.
Yes. Over here.
I am. Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you.
And do we have participants in the conference at this point?
Yes, so just as a recap, we have three registered council members, and that includes Councilmembers Bagby and Paula, and also joined by Mayor Cruz.
All right. Irene, I think the next item is here. Consider cancellation of regular city council meeting schedule for August 25th and September 22nd.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just as a quick reminder, I guess for the past couple of years, the city council has been going strong even amid COVID and the pandemic and various other items that have occurred over the last two years. It has been practice where the city council normally, it's a term called "goes dark", where they sort of choose to take a break when items are light on upcoming agendas, especially in the middle of summer, close to the Fourth of July weekend, and then oftentimes by the Christmas Day holiday. So with, in reviewing the, what we call our tentative forward calendar, which is projected... So with, in reviewing the, what we call our tentative forward calendar, which is projected for months in advance of upcoming items that staff schedules and in conversation with the mayor, council is simply suggesting that if the council wishes to cancel first the meeting on August 25th, as currently, there are no items scheduled for the 25th and no urgent items. The second proposed cancellation meeting is for September 22nd, and that is due to the Cal Cities, which you just voted on for the voting delegate and alternate. Even though the business meeting takes place on Friday, Wednesday kicks off the expo, which includes various workshops and seminars for all the officials attending the conference. Normally it's held virtually, at least it was last year, but now it's back to semi-normal pre-COVID, and it's going to be held in Sacramento, which the 22nd, Wednesday 22nd falls on a normal scheduled council meeting. If the council chooses to cancel either or both, of course, if there's any urgent items that the council needs to take into consideration and that quickly, they can, of course, schedule a special meeting, which only requires a 24-hour notice. And I leave it at the council discretion.
May I ask Irene for you to remind or to give an idea to the other council members on what are the items that we're going to be looking at in August, August 11th, so that there's a familiarity of what are the immediate issues that we have to address that we are addressing?
Of course, and I can actually pull it up so everyone can see. And I'll do a shared screen of you. So currently scheduled for August 11th, as you see here, under consent, we have the acceptance of trail improvements at City Park, and of course, these are all tentative. Often, we don't know for certain until we're close to the deadline. Sometimes we're waiting for materials to come in from other consultants or other parties. And then public hearing will have the master fee schedule, which gets updated every year, and followed by an urgency ordinance for the water shortage. And then we'll also look at the urban water management plan ordinance adoption. The council has been named to respond to the grand jury report that was recently released, and so staff will be bringing forward an item for discussion to respond to the grand jury. And we have water grade upgrades, same master agreement, and again, these are all, well, say half of them are possibly tentative, with the bulk of the item really being on the discussion regarding water. And then after today's discussion with the mayor, possibly bringing back the discussion on cooling centers and looking at policy. And if I just scroll, you know, further down, we really don't have anything, August 25th. So again, that's really just with staff's discussion and then just anticipated items.
And would it be appropriate, David, for us to ask if anybody else in council has issues that they would like to bring up or something, an item to consider on the 11th?
It certainly is, Madam Mayor. That is part of your agenda tonight is discussion on future agenda items. So, you know, if you want to move that item up to have that discussion now, I think you can, or at least give, provide some feedback on those items that our city clerk presented that are on the, that are currently on the August 11th forward calendar. And just by way of background, the forward calendar is a tool that we utilize to track the items that are going to be coming forward to council. It's always available to council should you need to see it or want to get a feeling for what's coming forward. We, of course, schedule those items that council requests, but we also want to plan and make sure that we capture, you know, public hearing dates because those require advanced notice in terms of public hearings. And also just look at planning the agenda because often, a lot of things land at the same meeting, and it makes for, it can make for a really long meeting. So staff, and particularly myself and the city clerk, try to move items around to address the workload sometimes for council meetings because we know it can get, it can get really full, and which can result in a very, very long council meeting. So we try to, try to mitigate that if we can.
So, and I think I would like to go ahead and do that because I want to make sure that Councilmember Paula, Bagby, and Vice Mayor Lance, have a thought to consider, is there something that they feel is stressing that should be, you know, included on the 11th? Or if they have some feedback on those items that Irene presented that are serious and that we need to, I mean, especially grand jury one, we definitely need to respond to that because there's a timeline on it.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can, I'll kick it off. First of all, I'm fine with going ahead and canceling these, recognizing that as the workload dictates, you can call a special meeting for those items. Sometimes it's better to have a work session or a special meeting if it's something urgent, and that happens frequently. But since there's no current items for that particular August meeting and the September meeting, you won't have a quorum, so it makes sense that we move forward to cancel those and go ahead and make sure staff's fully aware, we support, if there's something comes up, to go ahead and call a special meeting so we could take care of business. And as far as any items that go to August 11th, I have nothing. Most of our items that I wanted to address are on the subcommittee agendas, and those will move forward, and eventually, they'll be coming to the full council.
Well, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'll move that, we approve this. Thank you. So it's a motion and a second.
And so there are no other items that anybody wants to add?
No, it's done, Madam.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Irene?
Madam Mayor, before Roque, we may just want to check in with the public.
Oh, yes. Any hats, any concerns online?
So, none in the public and no hands are raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, thank you for reminding us. And Irene, I guess we could call.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Thank you.
And I need to announce that for the August 12th coffee with the mayor, Vice Mayor Lance will be hosting that, and hopefully with the director of the Sonoma County Economic Development Since it's in the same agenda.
Madam Mayor, will that be in person or is that going to be by Zoom?
Well, it depends on what happens, you know, with our health situation.
As of right now, yes.
As of right now, it'll be in person at the senior center.
Oh, the senior center, oh, perfect.
At the senior center, yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be all in place. Yes.
And Madam Mayor, if we can, I'll just, for the minutes, we'll capture that update under council reports?
Yes.
Under item J?
Okay.
But that means we still have to cover subcommittee items?
Yes.
When you're ready.
And so now we'll get to subcommittee reports, and we'll start with Finance Administration and Police. I know that Councilmember Paula and I have certain concerns that we definitely need to highlight during this, and one of the things that we're probably going to have to address is going to be the health orders according to what the county and the state indicate. So that's definitely something that we're going to have to be checking on ongoing. And anything else on that is scheduled for August 2nd next week at 1:30 a.m. And as always, we welcome the public to join via Zoom. And it's going to be held where, because I know we're changing-
Cloverdale Fire-
At the Fire District Office, I mean, Community Room. So please, let's make sure that we tell Cloverdale Connect about the changes in location and times for the subcommittee meetings. I think we might be a little bit too late for August, but for September, definitely. And then, anything on the American Rescue Plan funding, David?
Madam Mayor, staff's going to provide an update and report to council. On the, on the American Rescue Plan, including an overview of the funding that we have now received, our first allocation of funding for year one. And included with that will be some analysis that's been performed by our Finance Director, Susie Holmes, on relative to the allowed uses and provided by the review of the guidance offered by the Treasury, as well as looking at the backfill of revenue that was a key provision within, within the American Rescue Plan. And so we're, we're prepared to present that analysis to the, to the subcommittee next Monday.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bagby?
I believe you're referring to Planning and Sustainability.
Yes.
And we meet August 17th at 4:00 p.m., and I don't know where that's going to be yet, but I'm sure it'll be on the agenda when it's released.
Currently, just for the benefit of council, our subcommittee meetings are scheduled to be held at the Cloverdale Fire Protection District, with the exception of the Joint City School District Subcommittee, which will be held at the library, kind of as a midpoint between school district and city facilities, as well as the homelessness community advisory group will also be held at the library. So all other subcommittees will be held at the Fire District except for those two, those two meetings.
If I show up at the wrong building, please forgive me then. Everything's five minutes away, so I'll do my best.
Yeah, just have a seat.
I'll just go to the hall probably.
Okay, Public Works had a nice meeting yesterday, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Yes, we did. We met yesterday, it was a good meeting, and a couple of things, the traffic signal at the south end of town, that I know there's a lot of people that have serious concerns, including myself, on how that light's functioning. And we had Steve Fritz Simmons with W Trans at the meeting through Zoom, and he heard basically the concerns, and he made good notes, and I know working with our city manager and assistant city manager, they're going to be addressing that. He assured us he's going to try his best to be there this week, but for sure next week. So it will be addressed. And I forwarded some pictures, Angela Cardoba sent some pictures from today, and it showed the cars just backed all the way over the overpass. It was amazing. And that's the thing that we've been hitting, but it's intermittent. So if you go through it, you may not see that, but it happens frequently throughout the day. So we sent those to W Trans as well, so they have those. So hopefully, we'll have an update on that. The other key thing, there's quite a few things we talked about, was on the drought, and maybe the city manager can give a real brief overview of some of the things that are coming down the pipe with the state.
Yeah, Mayor, council, if I can, we, we do have an item on the agenda status update on current emergency, and I was going, I was going to go into detail on that if that's okay.
Okay, so we covered it that way.
Yeah, we'll cover that more.
Thank you. That concludes our next meeting would be September 28th at 2:00 p.m. at the Cloverdale Fire Protection District Community Room.
And I understand that the timing of when the consultant comes is not necessarily when the traffic jam is happening.
He did report, he did, they did come out for, they were there for one hour, I think it was from 4:30 to 5:30, and they didn't see a problem, so he was trying to get a better fix of a time. The pictures that were sent to him today were actually taken at 10 minutes to four. So it's happening sporadic, but it was fairly congested today, yeah.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I can, just opine on the comments that Councilmember Paula made. First, I want to acknowledge that the community has expressed concerns about the traffic signal operations at our new signal, and we just want to ask for, for their patience as we, as we fine tune how those signals operate. It is part of the process that we go through and try to fine tune. The challenge with this particular signal is there's eight phases, and so it's a much more complicated signal plan, signal operations than your traditional four-phase signal because you have the dual, the dual intersections. And of course, the eight phases all take time to go through, and so we're trying to reduce the amount of the timing for some of those phases so it'll reduce, you know, wait time. One of the other recommendations that was made was to look at and evaluate whether we could implement the yellow turn signal so that it can allow for turning movements when there's no oncoming traffic. Because currently, it's a traditional turn signal, so it goes through red, yellow, and green, or, excuse me, yeah, red, yellow, green. And, and when it's red, even though it's clear, car cannot make those turning movements. But if we go to a yellow signal phase, it would all allow those turning movements when there's no oncoming traffic, and we think that may alleviate some of that, some of the backing up that's occurring, you know, during peak, peak volumes of traffic. The other issue, too, that we've determined was, as part of the analysis, we always look at when you expect peak volumes. Often, in traffic engineering, it's considered between five and six, and I think what we're finding, particularly with that signal, is that we're experiencing peak volumes earlier, so more, more like between three and four. And so we have somewhat, somewhat unique traffic patterns and timing. And so that, again, the traffic signals are programmed to address peak, peak volumes at certain times, and so, you know, again, this is part of that refinement process, that learning that we're undergoing, and our traffic, traffic engineers are already in advance of the meeting yesterday, we're planning to make some, some adjustments, and it's just a matter of getting our appropriate consultants out there to make those adjustments in the field, and we are currently planning to do that next week.
Thank you, and yes, definitely, we asked Paula to be patient and to acknowledge that it's, it's being worked on. So thank you very much, David. Joint City Fire District, hopefully in October and not before. And Vice Mayor Lance, Joint City School District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met about a week and a half ago, and there were several items that were discussed. One about, let's see, where should I start here? They recently updated their development impact fees to max out how much the school can get from impact fees. They obviously showed their frustration by showing how much it costs per student in school districts versus what they're allowed to get from development fees. They, we discussed the South Fields Project that we have, they have a notice of the negative declaration they're putting forward. On that property on the south end of town next to the Baumgartner Ranch property, they are planning on putting a soccer field, baseball field, and softball field, along with a small parking lot and restroom concession area. And that's what's been proposed, and they're pushing towards and trying to get as much out of the property as possible. They also, to kind of touch on what was discussed in public comments, they discussed and talked to us about maybe putting a dog park and donating a portion of that property to the city. So that was just something that everyone's kicking around, it's on the list of things we're going to discuss as this moves forward. Let's see, we went over the new buildings and everything, we're doing all the facility improvements, Jefferson, Washington, and the high school. The high school has basically new sports facilities they've completed, and they've been doing the roofs, which they said were almost done. The middle school has a gymnasiums being completed. The middle school has a gymnasiums being completed and a multipurpose room that is being remodeled with new weight room and new cafeteria stuff, new stuff on their stage that is completely gut remodel. And if you saw what the pictures I've seen, it's, it's like having a school on top of a riverbed. It's pretty amazing, but it's still standing. And then Jefferson School, they have 12 classroom, two-story. They're, they're predicting everyone will be moved in during Christmas time. We discussed the community pool and everybody knows that that's on track and working well. That as soon as this season's over, we're moving forward with the heater system. And that's great with the schools. And our next meeting is scheduled for September 20th at 5:00 PM. And David, I'm going to correct you. I think we said it's going to be held at the high school. On that one, they're trying to get us there so that we can do a little tour.
That's right.
And we weren't sure if it was going to be in the Maker Space Classroom or another one. However, it was determined it will be at the high school location.
Thank you very much. And I want to make sure that we continue to push to get some applicants for the student liaison.
Absolutely. I will, they have a new high school principal and so, and the superintendent has gone on vacation. So we'll be moving forward with that along with the project you brought up. And I'm married with your, your artist friend that does murals. And the school's very excited and interested in that, to have them team up with the students. So thank you.
And then Vice Mayor Lance and I are in the Homeless Community Advisory Group Meeting.
You want to go first?
Go ahead.
I'll just, I'll just say that I'm also on the county task force with the homeless. And we had a very large meeting with that recently. And that way, I have a little more to talk about. So I'm, we're going to break up, break out rooms right now to discuss different ways that we can get the, the community involved, the, you know, different things to take the county plan and move it forward. Kevin and I are in what they call a community engagement role. And we've been working really hard with that. And it's, it's funny because the same week that we're talking about community engagement and things like that that get everybody involved and ways to get the word out to everyone, we got an email about one of our local homeless that was seeking help and excited to, to move forward with that. And while they were doing that, they ran into many barriers and roadblocks and found that this person, once they needed help, couldn't get it because they didn't have the proper insurances and things along those lines. And because, so because he wasn't financially stable or had good insurance, he couldn't get into any of the programs that were offered. And it took them until yesterday, so almost a week of everybody in our city. I mean, it was, the community came together for this person and worked really hard. Even the hospital, he sat in the hospital for 16 hours by himself before he finally just got up and walked out and got no help. So it shows our, our disconnect that we have with the services that we technically have offered that are not there. They're non-existent if you don't have a deep pocket.
And that's, and that's the breakthrough that I want to, is the placement of the individuals once they come into the system. And unfortunately, this individual that we're talking about sat forever. And he has a terrible physical condition that needed to be tended, like immediately. And we were lucky that he didn't go back and had to go through the whole process again. And that was just, I guess, by the grace of, of everybody's energy towards him to, to stay in the, in the route to be placed in a recovery program.
Every single group that we have in our community was trying to help this person. And they were all stopped and stopped. And it's, it's, it was sad.
We were spinning wheels and it was a very frustrating moment. But we are happy to report that it's moving along in spite of everything that, that was faced.
So with this, I, I, I spoke to James Gore after our county meeting. And basically said, his program's great. I don't know if anyone knows and I want to make sure it's public. Newsom allocated $12 billion towards homelessness. And so with the, what the work we're doing, not we, but our county, there will be money allotted to, to help. And the, the way that this committee through the county is set up, it works very well for the person that doesn't have an abuse problem. He's not a drug addict. He's not mental health. And he has money. It, it's a phenomenal program. If I, if I was down on my luck and just about to go homeless, the county's program would work phenomenal. However, if you have a medical issue, you can't get in. If you have a mental health problem, you can't get in. If you're on this drug, you can't get in. And there's all these little things that basically make people run in circles and they might as well just stay on the street because they feel like they're wasting their time. So I've been doing my homework, trying to figure out what can we do. And I even talked to Supervisor Gore and told him, I said, "No, your project's wonderful for the low-hanging fruit. But what do we do for the other 90% that needs your help truly? And are the ones that, that are affecting our communities and are just laying on our streets and vandalizing and stealing and things along those lines to supply their habits or, or using their habits for their mental health problems." He, he's going to try to push forward and help things that along with Laura's Law. I looked into other things that we have in our county. Their list is called like Enhanced Care Management. It's also called Whole Person Care. I found out Alexander Valley Healthcare has the contract for that. So they're a good resource and we really need to start pushing people towards Debbie and her programs to get them help through her. The other catch that I'm running into is Medi-Cal. If they don't have good insurance, they don't go anywhere. And our county really needs to, to start working on this one and start looking into the, the partnership services that I, I can't find. I called another county to ask questions. The other county says, "Yeah, we have partnership services," which is what allows them to start using Medi-Cal and get money through grants and things like that. I can't find that in our county. So if you want to get help, we need to start pushing on our supervisors, on our jails. And I know people think jail's a bad place, but it has the best help you can get for mental health and drug and alcohol abuse. And it's not like jail. I'm sorry, but when I worked there, the only thing I got to do different was I got to go home and pay my own bills. Everybody's out. They got the newspapers, TVs, all the food, anything they wanted. They visited people twice a day. They had, you know, it's not like the old, old style jail. So whatever it is, Ravage, Essex, everybody, we need to get people on board. And we need to get all our supervisors on here because otherwise, all we're doing is wasting billions of dollars while the county buys hotels for certain people.
But at the same time-
And we're not solving our problem.
We need to come up with alternatives outside of the box.
Correct.
And, and so when we talk to our supervisors, when we talk to our other elected officials and representatives, we need to make sure we have a plan too, to say, "This is what you're saying, but this we believe will work better." And, and these are the kinds of things that I really welcome the community to contribute. Not to complain, but to contribute with a plan on how we can address the situations that we are facing. So-
Which is exactly why I'm putting it out there because I'm doing my homework. I'm meeting with, with our supervisors and I want everyone else to, to send letters, send emails, and push a little bit to, to get these people to understand that we don't, we don't want to help just the top 10%. We want to help the ones that truly, truly need it, that are out here that can't get it.
But always remember, ask people to send some sort of solution to the problem.
Absolutely.
And we have 7:15 meeting, so we need to get this rolling here. You too, right, David? We are all at that 7:15 meeting and I want to make sure-
Always bring solutions.
I need to look fresh at 7:15.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask just a comment and a suggestion. Maybe as you attend these meetings, it would be really helpful if there's things that we could all weigh in on with our elected as well, sending letters to our state senator and our assembly and our supervisor. Sending us something with talking points of what the issues are, as you just laid them out, and what we would like to see them contribute or help fund or get in place. That would be helpful because then we could all engage and, and each individually reach out and try to get some of those things moving. So thank you for all your work.
And I, I really support Councilmember Paula's point because, for example, I, I am part of the Community Services Legal Cities Committee. And these are the kinds of things that we bring forth. Okay, this is what our communities, you know, going, undergoing at this point. And these are the solutions that we see that are working. And we are also seeking information from the group to see what else we can do. So I, I think this is something that I definitely believe that all of us should do when we go to the meetings, to have our talking points and share with the rest of the council. So that when the city manager or anybody else takes an initiative to request services, we, we can say, because we participated in this event and these issues were discussed, these are the, these are the recommendations or the things that we would like to see. So that we can continue to enhance the life and, and of our town. So yes, thank you very much for that. And Melanie, did you have a comment? Okay, so at this moment, council reports, I submitted mine in writing. And I am very excited about the, the trash truck in Healdsburg. Why don't you talk about that, Melanie?
Well, I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I included two of the photos of the, the, let's see, first electric garbage truck that Recology, Recology is rolling out. And we learned from Councilmember Hagley in, in Healdsburg that he actually wrote it into the contract that when Recology got their electric garbage truck, that they had to be the first to get it. So-
They did.
They did. And so I went, I, the mayor and I drove down to Healdsburg for an eight o'clock christening of the, the first run of this electric garbage truck at Recology. And it was very, they were, so they had Recology staff there. They were very excited because it is a pilot project. And one of the, the, the things that they're going to be piloting and gathering information about is that there is actually an onboard computer on how much electricity and energy the, the truck is using. And they're going to be gathering information about the routes and optimizing, using that data, just like, like you, you have a computer in your car and when you go to the dealership, they plug it in and they look for all of the error codes and, you know, all of the information. They basically have that on this truck, but they're going to be plugging it in every day to download the data about how the truck is performing, how efficient it is, but then also about optimizing the routes. Because one of the areas of low-hanging fruit for, you know, for switching over to electric vehicles are service vehicles like garbage trucks, like postal service trucks, UPS trucks that are, that drive kind of a predictable route every single day. So once they have that information, they'll know, you know, how much of, you know, which truck needs to have what kind of battery pack for the length of the driving that they do, for the route that they have. And then they'll also be able to probably be able to see like which driver is better at using the regenerative braking and actually charging the battery while they're driving. So they'll probably have a little competition, you know, around that as to like who is the most energy-efficient driver. So it's really, it was very fun to go down and see other council members and other staff members who, you know, we've only seen on Zoom for like the past year pretty much and kind of catch their excitement about this new truck. And it's just going to be fun to see, hopefully, you know, just like when, you know, people adopt an electric car because, you know, they're retiring their vehicle or something like that. But as the fleet retires, they'll be able to take, learn from this pilot truck, you know, the range that it needs and, you know, how, how efficient it is. And they'll be able to roll out new trucks efficiently and effectively, hopefully eventually throughout the entire fleet. It'll take time, but you know, eventually we will get there. So it was a lot of fun. So I have pictures of it in my, in my council report if anybody is, is interested.
Okay, and I understand you submitted a-
Yeah, mine's been submitted. Thank you.
And so now, legislative report?
Madam Mayor, staff doesn't have any legislative reports or letters to support our opposition at this time.
Okay, and now we go to the good stuff, the current situation with the water supply.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's a pretty significant update that I want to share with council. On July 12th of this month-
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I think we have a question in the public. Yes.
I, I, I probably skipped it a couple of times. Just, just tell us.
Renee, we got you now. You should be over there.
All right, my apologies, Renee. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak regarding the community advisory group. I also was working, trying to help bring up that we're speaking about. And myself being frustrated with a lot of the remarks, but it seems like the main issue is Laura's Law and then research into that. And I did write to the board of supervisors and the copy of the city council.
My department, but I'm wondering, can the city of Cloverdale write their own letter for Laura's Law? And then I will continue to get other community folks to also write into the supervisors. But is there something we can do as a city to put pressure on to get that passed?
Thank you. And we welcome you in tomorrow's, tomorrow for me, Melissa's?
August.
Uh, uh, August 2nd, to make sure that you come to our community meeting, Renee. And we'll, we'll continue to be in touch. And thank you for the communication you sent to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, my apologies, David. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 12th, the Office of Administrative Law approved an emergency order that was approved by the State Water Resources Control Board that provided for curtailment of water rights within the Upper Russian River, Upper Russian River watershed. There, there's triggers within the emergency regulations that we refer to as a curtailment order. It says, "Once water levels fall below storage targets in Lake Minassino or when flows cannot meet demands of the Lower Russian River, the curtailment order will take effect." We were notified today that that trigger was hit in terms of the reservoir level in Lake Minassino. That specific level that provided the trigger was 26,109 acre feet. And we understand that the Lake Minassino is now below that trigger somewhere right around 26,079. Of course, it's a continued drawdown. So that, the trigger has been hit. We fully expect that the regional board is now, or the Water Resource Control Board now will notify all senior water right holders or what are referred to as pre-1914 water right holders in the Upper Russian River watershed that they're required to curtail water diversions. What that means for Cloverdale is that, in our reading of the, the order, is that we will have to meet what are referred to as health and safety standards. The health and safety standards that are provided for in the curtailment order is 55 gallons per person per day. It's a very strict usage requirement for our water utility to meet. We understand, or we believe it's going to become effective immediately. And we will likely be required to petition the, the board to develop a plan to enable us to seek ways to, to meet that. I don't think we can, as a city, reasonably meet that standard without very significant impacts, not only to our residents, but our city operations, but also our businesses and our industrial users. The, the order does not, our read of it, it does not specify specific curtailments by water user type. So we believe it's going to be up to the city to determine how we meet that target. For reference, we are currently pumping approximately 1.2 million gallons per day at our treatment plant. If you strictly take a, kind of a strict reading of the, the curtailment order at 55 gallons per person per day and multiply that by the number of persons at the latest census, it's, it's slightly above 500,000 gallons per day. So it's, it's nearly a 60% reduction in our current water use to meet the order. Of course, I want to note that the city of Cloverdale is a senior water right holder of, of water rights along the Upper Russian River. We do want to look at the order very carefully. Our city attorney and our team is evaluating the order. And we'll be looking at it carefully in terms of water law and, you know, making sure that we do an analysis relative to our water rights. The last thing we want to do is- The last thing we want to do is impair our water rights that we know are so important to our community. With that said, we, we do think it's going to be, it's going to trigger a number of actions that we're going to have to bring forward to council for your consideration. We, as of course, council took very proactive action to acknowledge a water shortage emergency and declare it stage two with a 25% reduction. Our current analysis indicates we're, we're, we're hitting that target, not, not, not perfectly, but we're, we're, we're kind of targeting, or we're, we're floating along that 25% reduction. So, I want to say to the community, thank you for the work you've done to, you know, help meet the water conservation mandates as requested by our, our city council. I know it's, it's not easy, and it requires action by all of you to do that. Unfortunately, with, because of the impact of the drought that it's having on our water supply, our main water supply in Lake Minassino, we recognize that there, there are going to be a necessity to ask the community for additional conservation. So, we'll be bringing forward, as we talked about a little bit earlier, at your August 11th meeting, consideration of an increase in the water shortage emergency stage from our current stage two to either stage three or stage four. And we'll, we'll provide some analysis around what those targets mean, what the impact looks like to our community, very likely to, to even move in the direction of what the curtailment order provides. You know, we're probably looking at, at a stage four. But we'll lay that out for council, and ultimately, it's going to be your decision. And as part of that, you know, council did adopt the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. It, it does provide a number of prescriptive program language around what are some of the ways in which we can target individual user groups, or user types, and that again, looking at our residential users, our industrial users, our commercial users, as well as irrigation. So, you know, this will be a key document to help inform your decision. But what we will be bringing forward is an urgency ordinance to align our current municipal code with the urban water management plan. So, you'll, you'll see that come forward. We think that's, that, that, that's a critical step to then implementing the new water shortage emergency stages that are provided for in the urban water, water management plan. So, we realize there's a lot of moving parts here, and our, our, our team, city staff, and our, our team with Myers-Navey has formed a water emergency response team. We are looking at all the issues related to the drought and how we can address, you know, the need for improved messaging with our community to support, you know, reductions of water use. Of course, we'll be, you know, looking to this plan to help, you know, guide some of that messaging and what steps we need to take, along with what programs we can implement to help out our, our, our community, you know, meet these more restrictive needs. And again, in the context of the legal review of our water rights and ensuring that we're not doing anything to impair those rights because we, we're a long-term senior water right holder in the Upper Russian River watershed. But this is a very significant development that has been triggered with these emergency regulations, and, you know, and I think it's a reflection of the significance of the drought that we're in. It's really a historical drought in all contexts. With that said, I do want to note that we, every single day, are monitoring water levels in our wells. Our, the, the, the data suggests that our wells are performing very well. We've seen minor reductions in the static well levels, so we, we think our wells are well-suited to meet the needs of our community. Of course, again, because of the historic significance of this, as the drought prolongs, you know, we, we just remain cautiously optimistic that, you know, they will continue to provide the water that we need for our community. And so, some of what we're addressing is really the, the regulatory side of the, the need to address the drought with, you know, while we, again, continue to monitor very closely our water levels, and we're reporting that every week to, to the state board as required by the previous reporting order that was implemented in May and that impacted the post-1914 water rights. So, what you're seeing is a series of actions by the state to, to reduce and preserve what water we can within, within, within Lake Minassino, because there's some real concerns if it continues to, to draw down and where we don't get the water that we, we so hopeful we receive by precipitation, you know, later in the season. So, again, staff's preparing and doing our analysis, and we'll be bringing forward a number of actions for council to consider in this, to address this emergency order. That, that concludes my report, Mayor. There's, there's a lot of work that we, needs to be done, and, you know, we're happy to address any questions about the work.
One of the things that I'm concerned about is that this, this particular mandate doesn't necessarily address industrial and commercial. And, and I think that we need to have ongoing conversation with, with this particular stakeholders, because they probably use more water than the residential. So, and I, I want to make sure that this is fair to everybody, and that's why I'm hoping that perhaps they could be an ad hoc organized so that, I'm going to put you on the spot, Councilmember Fala, for us to approach the businesses and the industry in town and to have ongoing conversation, to see how we can assist them in meeting their goals, as well as they assist us in meeting our goals as, as a town, and also in terms of the water rights that we definitely want to hold on to.
Madam Mayor, I, I think that's a great idea. You know, we're really going to ask our community to, you know, sacrifice, make some very significant sacrifices in terms of their water use, you know, first and foremost by our residents, but likewise by our business community and our industrial users. And I, I think it is critical that we, we engage with our business community, because they, they are a significant water user, to determine, you know, what's appropriate as part of the pie, that they can, you know, as I think of it, and I don't necessarily find enjoyment using the term, but share in the pain. We want to see that we're all kind of doing our part as members of the community to address this very significant drought, and that includes the city and what actions we need to take as a city in our landscape areas, in our, in the areas that we utilize water to reduce that usage. And we know that, that water for our businesses is very critical to our, our economic health and to the economic health of those businesses, and to engage them in this process, I think, is critical, and I think doing that outreach is, by way of an ad hoc, I think it's a good idea to, to kind of start that dialogue.
Yeah, because we don't want to jeopardize our industrial, commercial activity in town, and, and we need to work at this as, as a team. It's a collaborative effort. So, this is, you know, this is my perspective about that. Yes?
Just kind of two, two comments, and probably kind of, kind of as a question, kind of find out like where, where we are. I mean, the, the first one that came to mind is that I know that there have been residents who have had concerns about, you know, reading their bill and being able to see what their actual usage is, and, you know, difficulties with that. And I know that, you know, we're not technologically where we want to be with having, you know, real-time readers on people's meters, but there is, there has been some correspondence between the engineering department as to the feasibility for residents to use Flume, which is a product that you actually hook up to your incoming water, and it tells you what your, what your usage is in, in real time. And that is a, probably a, it's a legitimate option for single-family residents, or anybody who's on their, their own meter. I know that the city of Healdsburg was offering rebates for that, so I don't know if that's something that, that we would like to pursue on our own, or go through our CPA and ask them, you know, to make sure that that's like on the list of products. The second thing is too, is if we're reaching out to businesses, one of the recent, one of the main resources that we have to offer them is now the Advanced Energy Center that Sonoma Clean Power has in downtown Santa Rosa. One of their big energy and water savers is a recycle water dishwasher for, for, for businesses, for, for businesses, for restaurants, and, you know, wine tasting facilities that are constantly, you know, recirculating and running the dishwasher. That's really, they have a new commercial one that is specifically designed to save water. So, those are the kinds of resources that we have, and maybe we don't all know that we need to, you know, gather it in one place and, you know, in a clearinghouse so that when we're approaching businesses in town, we have resources to give them to say, hey, this is, you know, this is what's available for you. And then also getting a clearinghouse for, for the residents so that they have the resources that they are eligible for, like the financing through our CPA for water-saving installations. I know the RCA is, is working on that, you know, if we were able to do a Flume rebate, if we were able to do cash for grass, things like that. There just needs to be a one-stop shop for Cloverdale residences, residents so that, and, you know, and hopefully, you know, the business owners as well. So, I mean, that communicating that, you know, how, this is, this is a big deal and it's a real emergency, but also, we need to communicate the urgency, but we also need to communicate that there are resources out there to help folks address this in both their homes and their businesses. We do have resources, and then there are probably resources that we don't even know about yet that we'll be able to take advantage of. So, I think that going forward, that's what I'd like to see, and whether it needs to be on a subcommittee, or it needs to be part of the, what's on the agenda for, for August. It's, I guess I'd leave that up to staff, what would be appropriate, but lots of, lots of moving parts, but I think it's important that we come with, with solutions to help people make this adjustment, because it's, it's not going to go away.
Yeah. Councilmember Bagby, one of the things that we were discussing is to provide, to start doing some research within our water district and, and with financial department to, to see what is been, what has been the, the usage by different members of the industry or commercial, so that we can say, this is what has happened, this is what, where you've come, and this is where we really need to go, so that we can continue to be prosperous and in terms of our health and safety and in terms of our commercial activity. Councilmember Fala?
No, I think that's an excellent idea, to have an ad hoc, but we should have a hit list of all the services available, what we can do as a community to help. And, you know, David, you and I did talk about the castric grass concept. I know Healdsburg does that. They have reclaimed water available to their residents. It'd be good to know if our residents, if they have their own transportation and tanks, if they could actually make an appointment to get reclaimed water for their vegetation. I believe Windsor has that, as well as Healdsburg has that in place. Healdsburg used to make that available, but now they're doing it in their community quite heavily, so I don't know if it'd be available to people. But it'd be good to know all that, so we can, as we approach it, these are options available.
Yes.
And it's also a good option for our own parks, because I know sport season's here, and if we can get reclaimed water and, and so we can continue to water the, the fields so the kids could play, you know, the sports activities, that would be, be really good. Otherwise, it's going to really impact our sports for the season, so.
But we don't have tertiary treatment.
No, we don't, but Healdsburg does.
Okay, so does, yeah.
And if we're able to access it, they have it, and a few years ago, they made it available to other communities. If you go to, you have to go pick it up.
Yeah.
And that's what I want to identify, if it's available to other communities, and if so, what would it take? And maybe we could put a plan together to, to make that available as well.
Thank you. Place, Mayor Lynn?
Yeah, just briefly, I'd like to see that, because I was told today that there's actually a shortage of reclaimed water now, so.
Yeah.
I would be really curious to see if they do start offering out to other cities, or really keeping it to themselves at this point.
I'm thinking they're not offering it, but again, I know Windsor also has it. There's other communities that have it that may make it available. I don't know. Especially to another city for fields, for sports activities. That, that would be the high priority, because the kids really depend on that throughout the season, so.
The one thing I would ask, and I don't know if it's possible or not, is it possible to know how much the city uses versus the residential and commercial?
Yeah, absolutely. Staff has quite a bit of data around water usage, including user type, and we can, we actually, one of the things the work does is, is look at our own water usage, so we, we, all of our parks are metered. We actually have to pay for our water, so we, we know that very well, and it's something our, our finance director, the reports are generated, and we, we can provide that to council, if that's something-
The only thing I would ask is that that gets brought to us when we do the different, whatever we have to do, stage three or four.
And, and we're looking at, to council member Paula's point, I did reach out to the city of Healdsburg, and they didn't say yes, but they didn't say no. So, I think, I think because their program is developing and they're seeing this demand being generated, they were, they were kind of being cautious about whether they would be willing to provide us with, with tertiary-treated water, so I just want to assure you that I did, I did make that call. And, and subsequent to that, we, we realized that through our own process at, at the water treatment plant, we, we do what's called backwashes with our, with our system, and some of that water, for lack of a better word, is, is, is not fully utilized. It goes back in the ponds, and we are looking at how we can utilize that water. We're, we've, we've been looking within our budget, we're, we're planning to purchase a portable water tank where we can pump that water into the tank and then deliver it to, to our sports fields, especially at Ferber Park, Vintage Meadows, and City Park, to, you know, do what we can to try to preserve the turf for our sports leagues that use those fields, so we can at least, you know, again, with the idea being we, we reduce our irrigation, so we, we know we're, we, we need to beat the same targets that we're asking the community to do, so we'll, we'll further restrict our irrigation, but then be able to use this water that otherwise sits in those ponds and just, you know, percolates. So, you know, our, our, our team is really thinking about how we can try to address the significant drought that we're affected, that we're affected by. So, that, that's something that we're trying to do, council member Paula. And, and in a way, we felt it was like, well, this is a, a great opportunity, because, you know, we're not having to drive down to Healdsburg and back, and we want to purchase this because it has this tank, because it has other uses, including, you know, fire suppression for, you know, when we're doing vegetation management. So, that's something you'll, you'll probably see pretty, pretty soon.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, how do we go about the ad hoc?
You know, it's not, it's, it's not agendized specifically tonight. I think, you know, if council supports the idea of the mayor and council member Paula being your, your ad hoc to do the business outreach, I think, I don't think any further action is necessary unless we don't want to check in with our, our city attorney.
And Mayor, and council, good evening. So, the, so as far as actually goes, I think it's just direction, we're just-
Ad hoc, it's a temporary, less than a quorum, not, not a, not something that needs to be on the agenda or anything like that. It's part of the report. It's just basically also staff asking for help, because there's, there's a lot of work to be done. David covered the issue very well, covered everything. As far as my office goes, as David mentioned, we're going to be looking at the order, the curtailment order, when it comes out, it's anticipated to come out, we're going to be taking a look at it. Hopefully, right now, there's only a draft. We're hoping that it's a little more complete, at least some type of guidance for resident, for a non-residential, so for the commercial, industrial, and whether it's, you know, go, go, go form a plan or whatever, using the, or having help from the ad hoc to kind of reach out, to start developing that plan is going to be critical. I think one thing that, I don't know if David mentioned, another thing we're looking at is to also getting professional technical assistance to assist staff. Staff does a great job tracking all this information, but sometimes getting a consultant that kind of does this for, for extra horsepower here, extra help that have been helping with these types of curtailment orders already, that's going to be very beneficial. I know David's in the process of that as well. So, regarding the ad hoc, I think it's just if, if the council's satisfied, we got direction, and the two members will, the mayor and council member Paula will, will help out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. Okay, so there's the direction. Any, anything else, David?
That concludes the staff's report on the current drought situation and impact to our watershed, Mayor.
And then the next item?
Next item on the agenda is a status update on the current emergency and discussion regarding COVID-19. Just wanted to mention that in this regard, we are, we're starting to see a resurgence of the Delta variant related to COVID-19. A number of counties now are beginning to implement masking guidelines, not just for, I think they've been in place for those members of the community that are unvaccinated, but we're starting to see those masking guidelines apply to our vaccinated community. It's unknown whether, at this time, whether we'll see a health order come from our health officer, Dr. Mayes, but, you know, given past practice, I want to just indicate that there is a relatively high likelihood that we'll see an order. But with that said, we do have, in Sonoma County and our neighbor to the south, very, very good vaccination rates and that's, I think, something that, you know, has been very helpful in helping us address the impacts of COVID. And that may be a factor that weighs whether there's a masking order or not because of our relatively high percentage of vaccinated residents. I think we are right around about 75% of our residents, our population, which is relative to, especially in the United States, a very high percentage. Whether it's, you know, high enough to prevent and mitigate all the hazards, I'm not sure, but certainly you're seeing the impact of the variant in those areas of the United States that have low, relatively low vaccination rates, especially if they're under 50%. The data suggests that the unvaccinated are being particularly impacted by the new Delta variant. But again, I just want to share that with council just because, no, it does impact our community whenever health orders are issued that require mandates. So, you know, we're tracking it closely. Of course, if it does become a mandate, we'll certainly share with council, but it's a function of the entire senior staff that we monitor and track. Our chief also tracks very closely and, you know, is also in close contact with our health officers as well. So we continue to monitor conditions and there's a lot of great data that's available on county website, socoemergency.org, including the GIS and you can look at it by, you can look at data by zip code and current vaccination, current rates, et cetera. So it's, all the data is out there, so I won't go into detail because it's a tremendous amount of data, but I would encourage the public to, if they're interested, to visit the website and can do, you know, take a look at where we stand currently with vaccination rates, case rates, et cetera.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I am, I feel that anybody who has compromised immune system, continues to wear masks and we know that people in the community who have been vaccinated are sick with the new variant because of exposure with children who are not vaccinated. So it's out there and we need to be careful. And, you know, I did read the article about the number of cases on a daily basis in Sonoma County hospitals, at the same time that 100% of the people in ICU have not been vaccinated. So, you know, it shows that you're really risking your life because of the exposure to the new variant. So I think that's it. Any comments, any questions? So.
I have a recommendation, so just regarding, under future agenda items, I know we touched on it, but maybe during the August meeting where we're discussing the water issues, we might want to just have a review of the capital improvement program and see which projects, just so that we have it as a reference, which projects have been prioritized because we may decide that tertiary treatment might need to be moved up.
Yes.
So, and just.
That's making Healdsburg a difference.
Yeah, and that's what's making a big difference there and, you know, and maybe it's something that we do want to, you know, focus some effort on getting some grant funding because obviously, you know, when we were working on that plan, we kind of, we kind of knew we were in a drought, but we weren't in the situation that we're in right now. So if there's anything on that priority list that we just need to refresh our memory as to, you know, where it was prioritized and what it would take, it would probably be a great place to have a little bit of discussion and a refresher on that.
Absolutely. We can do that. And maybe just to hone in here on the, on the specific project, I think, you know, what we're seeing is that there's a very likelihood that there's going to be a federal infrastructure bill. And, you know, often those types of, that type of funding targets, you know, what they call shovel-ready projects. And while our, moving to advanced treatment is by no means shovel-ready, but there are, you know, in terms of project management and start to finish, some key steps that need to be taken to initiate advanced treatment project, which usually starts with kind of a feasibility analysis and assessment. You know, if council so directs, we can prioritize that effort now and, you know, start doing the legwork in terms of looking at, you know, what is going to be required to bring an advanced treatment project to this community. And those are the kinds of things that might be able, we might be able to get funding for is to.
Well, it would be nice to get planning dollars so that we get dollars to actually do this.
Right, right. To fund the feasibility study, to do the, you know, move to construction, planning and so forth, so. You know, it's not something we're prepared to finance today, but I think there is logic in trying to do some of that preliminary work to help us out with being able to compete for funding.
And I think it would be wise for those of us who have not had the opportunity to see the plan from Healdsburg, I already went to some other council members from other jurisdictions, that I think it would be good for us to go and see. And that way we understand why it's so expensive and what is the result, which is very necessary for our community. So when we meet with our constituents, we can tell more about, it's not that we want to be Healdsburg, but there's certain things that are essential for our health and safety that Healdsburg has advanced and the same as Windsor, so.
The day of learning and waste are over.
Yeah. Now I'm going to have to get a haircut to save water. Okay, so if there are no other comments, we call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.